I'd like to call this meeting of the regular city council, November 24th, 2025. It is now 5:30. To speak online, I just want to read this disclaimer at the top. Register with your city clerk no later than noon of the day of the city council. When registering include your full name and especially tonight if you're presenting or coming forth, be sure to give us your full name and your residence and the topic that you're covering. And upon request, the city will make a good faith effort to provide an interpreter for the deaf or a hard of hearing at regular meetings if given 48 hours notice. To make a request, please contact the city clerk and provide your full name, sign language preference and any other relevant information. This meeting has been called to order. Roll of the council, please.
Councillor McLaughlin.
I'm here.
Councillor Runyon.
Here on Zoom.
Councillor Randall.
Present.
Richardson.
Present.
Councillor Ring.
Present.
Mayor Mays.
Present. Thank you, Councillor McLaughlin for filling in for me.
Yes, I was going to mention that. Thank you. All right, here we go with Ben Ring. Councillor, would you please pledge of allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We need an approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a second. There's, is there any discussion? With no hearing, no discussion, all in favor of passing the agenda for tonight, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you. It is approved unanimously. Presentation and proclamations. Chief Tom, would you come on up and OPOA award recognition? We don't know what OPOA is yet, but I'm sure you will tell us.
I'm fixing to tell you. Is this on? Okay, great. Gentlemen, fall in up front with me, please. Detective Sergeant Austin L. He's since transferred to patrol. Detective Juan Castro, Detective Sam Perez is a police chief. Even in a relatively small town like the Dals, there are things that are difficult about the job and taxing. And then there are things that are just an absolute privilege and joy. And working around our detectives and nominating them for this prestigious award falls in the ladder for sure. So I want to explain to you why we're here today and the distinguished honor that these gentlemen earned through their work. OPOA stands for Oregon Police Officers Association. The statewide organization dedicated to the profession and to increasing standards and pointing out and acknowledging the good work of police officers throughout the state. On April 11th of 2025, the Dallas Police Department detectives were notified of a major crimes team call out regarding an incident in the city of Hood River. Detectives Perez and Castro responded in another direction of Detective Sergeant L. Upon arrival, they learned that a Hood River resident had been killed while confronting three individuals in a stolen truck or attempting to steal his high value bicycle. The Dallas detectives collaborated tirelessly with Hood River Police Department, the Hood River County Sheriff's Department and others. And on April 12th, detectives located and apprehended two of the three suspects who were charged with second degree murder, first degree robbery and first degree theft. However, the primary suspect remained at large and without a known address, living a transient lifestyle in the gorge. For the next three days, detectives L, Perez and Castro pursued the fugitive relentlessly. They developed information that the suspect was attempting to, to obtain a handgun. And despite vague tips, cases of mistaken identity, false leads, they pressed forward. Searching transient camps, conducting prolonged surveillance and utilizing drones to cover difficult terrain. Their unwavering determination never faltered during the manhunt. On April 15th, 2025, their persistence was rewarded when Detective Sergeant L located the suspect at a camp near downtown the Dals. Pardon me. He quickly broadcast the location and the suspect description. And officers responded and the suspect fled on the stolen bicycle. That was the subject of the case. The Dallas Police Officers swiftly apprehended him without the use of force. And he was then turned over to the Mid Columbia Major Crimes Team. The dedicated and tireless efforts of Detective Sergeant L, Detective Perez and Detective Castro led to the successful capture of a dangerous and violent offender, significantly enhancing the safety of our community. Their exemplary actions are worthy of recognition. And on November 7th, the detectives were recognized statewide by the Oregon Police Officers Association at their annual banquet with a unit citation award for excellence for their work in this difficult case. Let's give them a round of applause. It's great work. And I know they won't, but you can say a couple of words if you want to.
Thanks, you guys. Great work.
Gentlemen, thank you for keeping us safe. Now we have presentation and proclamation, Christina and I assume Jim Winterbottom. Oh, Christina.
Hello.
Hi.
The presentation is all pulled up.
Okay. Would you tap on the mic to make sure it's, that's good.
Yeah, just hold it closer.
Perfect.
Alrighty, good evening, council. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Christina Feebig and I'm with the Tri-County Hazardous Waste and Recycling Program. Next slide, please. We'd like to give an update about our tri-county program as well as provide a brief overview for citizens who may not be aware of our services. Next slide, please. We are a three county, nine jurisdiction program that has been serving the region for over two decades. The core of our program is provide hazardous waste collection events to households, small businesses and agricultural producers several times a year. We are also tasked with providing recycling education and with the services that Waste Connection provides. There are many additional things we do to help support proper disposal such as subsidizing the cost of sharps, freon appliances, as well as providing reusable material for events. Next slide, please. Last year, we collected a little over 170,000 pounds. This year, we've collected a total of almost 190,000 pounds. Next slide, please. Our events are held at a variety of community locations such as the Dals Transfer Station and the Hood River Transfer Station. We do require registration for all at those events for safety, for safety measures. And we do also require businesses and agricultural producers to submit an application the week before the event, minimum one week forward. Slide. Other events that we've done, this year we partnered with a local Girl Scout troop to host a recycled art event. A total of 16 girls participated, six adults, including myself. The event was successful in teaching the girls how to upcycle and fun in creative ways. Our program also supported Waste Connections by advertising the free mattress recycling event they had in September. And in the future, we will continue to support Waste Connections as well as providing education to younger generations. So if you know of any schools or any teachers that would like me to come to their classrooms, let them know and I would be happy to come. Next slide, please. We refreshed our twice nearly used letter. This was our spring, our fall one just went out to households. And the spring always has our hazardous waste collection event and our fall one has a lot of tips and tricks. So this one you'll see all about recycling. And it's provided in both English and Spanish to help reach a broader demographic. Next slide, please. So the update on recycling. We have today curbside recycling pickup and drop off at the transfer station accepts a universal statewide collection list, also known as USCL. The logo you see on screen, Recycle on Oregon, is a statewide, public facing educational organization helping all Oregonians feel confident in recycling. Next slide. So this is the list. This is the same list across Oregon. So no matter where you go, county to county, this is the exact same list. What's different for us is that we now can add plastic tubs without lids made of PET number one, HDP number two, or PP number five. Buckets, pails and storage containers made of HDP number two or PP number five. Aseptic gable style cartons such as alternative milks, broths and juices. Nursery packaging and trays made of HDP number two or PP number five, as well as scrap metal weighing under 10 pounds or less and 18 inches or less in length. Please, no sharps or tangler items allowed. You can remember if the lid screws on, leave it on. So that's also a new change. And as it was before, please make sure the items are rinsed, dried and cleaned before recycling. Tin foil and aerosol cans are no longer on the list that everything else is. Clamshells and shredded paper still continue to be our greatest source of contamination as well. Next slide. You might be wondering what your role is in our little, our program. And it's appoint a representative. And Scott and Matthew, thank you both for being on and we, we love to have you guys on. So thank you for all of your hard work. They help with steering committees which meets quarterly, approve budgets, work plans, partners with our staff to promote our organization and participates in our annual DEQ Wayshed reporting. Next slide. So if you have any questions, feel free to email, go to our website, active on social media. So give us a follow on Instagram and Facebook. We do a lot of outreach on there. And if you have any questions, I will take them now.
Anyone? Questions?
How about a comment?
Comments would be good.
Can I just say I appreciate, well, all your services, but the hazardous waste pickups is really helpful. So I appreciate that. I participated in that. Was it a week ago?
Couple of weeks ago.
Recently. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate the participation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This portion of the meeting is dedicated to audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject which does not appear on the agenda. Interested citizens are required to sign up in advance to be recognized. Up to three minutes per person will be allowed. Citizens are encouraged to ask questions with the understanding that the city can either answer the question tonight or refer that question to the appropriate staff member who will get back to you within a specific or reasonable amount of time. If a response by the city is requested and that response is not immediately provided, the speaker will be referred to the city manager for further action. City managers report. Mr. Klebes.
Let's check, uh, let's check with the city clerk to see if anybody's signed up for audience participation. Okay. And anybody from the audience?
Anyone from the audience, would you like to speak tonight for an item not on the agenda? Okay. Now we're back to you.
Yes. Thank you, Councilor McLaughlin. Several items for you this evening. There was an Oregon City County Managers Association Board Meeting last week, which I serve on. And I wanted to update the council on several committee assignments that I'm participating on through that association. This is with serving as the liaison to the International City Managers Association, serving on several planning committees for the upcoming conferences for the association, one being the Northwest Regional Conference in Long Beach, California. And the other would be the summer conference that's going to be held down in Ashland this coming year. I also applied for and have been appointed to the League of Oregon Cities Policy Committee on Taxation and Finance, which sounds maybe a little boring to some, but I'm actually really looking forward to it. I think it'll be very interesting. I also wanted to provide the council an update that the city attorney, representatives from Public Works and myself met with a rather large team from the US EPA in regard to the Portland Harbor proposal, cleanup and proposal to potentially bring waste to our community here in the Wasco County landfill. Some of the key outputs from that relatively short meeting is that, yes, indeed, Wasco County landfill is one of four disposal sites that they're considering for this cleanup, that there is an initial reported truck volume of about 120 trucks per day. And that's a projection for all of the proposed sites, not solely for Wasco County. The EPA confirmed that waste that heads to the Wasco County landfill will be solid waste and not hazardous waste. And that the city has been added to the EPA's list serve for updates. And we can engage with the development of the community impacts mitigation plan. And so we got contact information for several members of their team. And we'll be hoping to learn more soon and be kept in the loop as updates progress. And I think one of the biggest pieces here in terms of timing was that physical cleanup and waste movement are projected to begin in 2028. So there is a little bit of time here to further engage with these proposals and evaluate kind of where things are headed. So we will monitor that going forward. As the council knows, we had a facilitated goal setting retreat with Sarah Singer-Wolson. And we'll be bringing information back to you, including in your packet tonight or some of the overview and minutes from that facilitated session. But we'll be bringing some additional information back to council on what those next steps look like to finalize that plan, have a bit more discussion on some of the flagship items and potential actions that we'd be looking to implement. We'll be also be doing some additional outreach to the organization as a whole to get input on our vision, missions and some of the values that we had some discussion on at that session. So we get input throughout the whole organization from all of our different staff members and have a bit more buy-in to what we've been developing. Last week I appeared on KODL. Q Life still has a pending application for the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Fund. That application has been submitted at the federal level and we're hoping to hear back soon to confirm that grant award. And I wanted to give a special shout out to Northern Wasco County PUD, Wasco Electric, the Dals Area Chamber of Commerce, the Dals Main Street and many other volunteers who worked to put up the holiday lights and stars and trees that we see through our downtown.
And they look, and they look terrific. I noticed on the way down tonight.
I'm glad to hear that, councillor. Last year, or maybe it was the year before, actually, through a partnership with Northern Wasco County Parks and Rec in the city of the Dals, we worked to restring those traditional holiday decorations with new garland and LED lighting. So hopefully they, they pop as you mentioned. Other than that, that's my city report for the evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? I'm going to change the, yes. Councillor Richardson.
Thank you. What is your title tonight? Chair?
Yes.
Well, president.
Chair recognizes councillor Richardson.
Thank you, Chair. Not to inappropriately skip the line on this, but at the recent Traffic Safety Committee meeting, there was a bit of discussion and some real concern voiced about the Willamette cleanup, sledge trucks or waste trucks, whatever you want to call them. And I just want to be clear or gain clarity. My understanding is city manager Klebes is that it's 120 trucks a day for something on the order of four or five months over the course of a summer. Is that correct?
They specify that a certain time period of the year?
So I don't know anything about Willamette Valley, but
Willamette River.
Willamette River.
Yeah.
So informally, I guess, or I guess the official name for that project is the Portland Harbor remediation. And that's how all the potentially responsible parties have been referring to it. But if you're talking about the same thing, it's 120 trucks per day for all four disposal sites. And I understood, not in that meeting that we had with the EPA last week, but from other literature about this project, that that was supposed to take place more or less over the course of about five or six months. Yeah.
For multiple summers.
Perhaps, depending on the season. But overall, it was 120 truckloads per day in total for four disposal facilities.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm really encouraged and I want to say thank you to you guys for engaging with that conversation. And just to give my two cents, we really need to get seriously engaged with this, not just staying on their mailing list or staying apprised of their decisions, but we really need to get ahead of it. You know, 120 trucks, 10 trucks a day for months at a time is, is just bonkers for our little town. And I think we need to gain clarity among ourselves as a council and a local government that it's, it's just not acceptable. And we need to sort of put our heads together and think about what that means for us, whether it's staff to be engaged, whether we need committee, whether we need to budget extra legal fees, whatever it takes. We need to not be thinking seriously about it in a year or two. We need to be, you know, on it this year.
Certainly councillor, I think there's a, there's a certain passive engagement element here with the lift serve and the updates that they provide on their own accord. And then there's action like we took specifically in this case to reach out and say, hey, we need to have a conversation and we want more of a direct relationship and update on what the current status is and what the critical next steps are. Where are the decision points where we can engage on and not let those just pass us by without having that opportunity?
Thank you. Let's, let's talk some more offline about how best to get at that.
Would you go ahead and continue with your report?
Sure. Thank you. Not that much to report. I did attend to Traffic Safety.
Yes, you made. Mayor Mays.
Do you see my hand raised? Cause I don't, I haven't. Okay, good. About the same subject. Notwithstanding the effect on our community, is it a foregone conclusion that the four sites, including ours, that the landfill will be able to handle 120 techs a day volume wise and for how long? Or is that yet to be determined?
It's our understanding, Mayor Mays, that they haven't made an acceptability determination just yet. And they haven't put anything in stone just yet. I think that those are precisely the types of logistics that the EPA is currently investigating at the regional level. And I promise that, you know, Matthew or I will definitely keep everybody in the loop as soon as we find out more or have any confirmations or anything that gets set in stone, we'll be sure to give everybody an update on that. But yeah.
That, you know, Mr. Mayor, that was kind of one of those discussion points, again, that we hope to gain more clarity on about, you know, if there's a certain volume of material coming to our landfill here, for example, how does that affect the landfill's lifespan? And what are some of those dynamics? And what are some of the long-term implications for the, the region and the community? And again, you know, not jumping to any kind of conclusions here, but just being informed about some of these potential impacts and being part of that conversation is the, is the impetus for our outreach.
Thanks, guys.
I have a quick, how would this benefit our community, this move? Would it?
I think if I was to, to, to argue the, the potential benefits, you know, maybe a little off the cuff. I mean, there are certain tipping, tipping fees and revenue generated by the, by the revenue, by the landfill, which could be of some kind of benefit here, depending, you know, if you outweigh some of the different costs and impacts overall. That's probably the, the only one that comes to mind right now.
Understood.
Acknowledging that I'm not an expert on those matters.
But you're gaining knowledge and you're asking questions and that's appreciated. Anything else, councillor?
That was the gist.
Okay, councillor Randall.
Thank you, Chairman McLaughlin. October 31st, I participated in the walking school bus where we walked along the newly completed Safe Routes to Schools project on West 10th Street. November 6th and 7th, attended the Strategic Planning Council Retreat. And on the 19th, I attended the Historic Landmarks Commission. We heard a staff report considering an application to remove and replace a non-contributing garage. However, the applicant was not able to attend and there was some question about that classification as non-contributing, whether that was accurate or not. So we will hear this issue again on the next meeting, which is scheduled for December 17th. That's my report.
Well, I was on KODL radio with Mayor Mays recently and the airport met last Friday and I have nothing except that we are starting with a hangar creation and construction and that there was a report on the college program with the hangar that's being built or the building and that's moving forward. So good news coming out of the Airport Commission. I'll move on to councillor Ring.
Thank you. On Friday, the 21st of November, I met with our city manager, Matthew Klebes, briefly in the afternoon. Thursday and Fridays on 6th and 7th of
Thursday and Fridays on 6th and 7th of November, met with the rest of the city council as well as city staff at the readiness center for our annual goal-setting session. I also, along with councillor Randall, participated in the walking school bus as well. That was great to see Republic Works and some of the students from Chenoweth Elementary and whatnot and what had been completed. On Friday, the 31st of October, I also met with our assistant city manager Fahy, Mayor Mays, councillor Richardson about the performance review evaluation revisions that we're working on. And then Tuesday, the 28th of October, I met with Sister Cities. They've, there's a couple of things there. They've actively been working on engagement with the, with the, with our, the DOWS High School for the spring visit to Miyoshi City. So there's applications if high school students are interested. Highly encourage people to take a look at that. And then the other, the other question, I actually have a question for the rest of the city council, just to see, just to get an idea how you guys feel about this. But we've been discussing the possibility of moving that into a committee within the city so that the city can participate in it and participate with Sister Cities more directly and provide a little bit more sustenance and whatnot and sort of revitalize that. I think they could definitely use the help. And there's a number of volunteers that have helped with that in the past. And yeah, so I don't know if there's general consensus from the rest of the city council on whether or not they would support that, that would be useful information. Yeah.
I've been impressed with the Sister City program.
Okay.
So continue, yes.
Okay. Councillor Randall, yep. Councillor Runyon, anything?
Not at this time, no. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Councillor Runyon, do you have any report to give?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
All right. I would be remiss if I didn't stop and recognize our mayor, Rich Mays, your report.
Thank you, sir. I'll just mention the ones that have not been mentioned yet. On October 28th, I did a radio interview with Mark Bailey at KACI. On October 30th, I attended the open house that the staff put on featuring all the downtown projects we have going on this year and next. On November 3rd, I attended an interview with KOIN TV in Portland with Emily Burris and Travis Teich about what's happening in the DOWS. On November 11th, or actually right before that, I attended the girls volleyball game in the quarterfinals and watched the DOWS High School volleyball team defeat Stateon and advance to the semifinals. And they then advanced to the finals later. And they came in second in the state. And I had been in contact with the athletic director to have them come to our council meeting on December 8th to be honored by the city council. On November 11th, I attended the, what was probably one of the most exciting sporting events I've ever attended. And that was the girls soccer team at Chenoweth. And they were playing Scapoose in the semifinals for the, for the girls soccer championship. And the game went down to, it was a tie, one to one. And with four seconds ago, the DOWS scored with four seconds to win the game two to one. And I am also going to ask the athletic director to make arrangements to have the soccer team here at the following council meeting on December 22nd. Arrangements are being made as we speak. Super exciting game. I was a judge on the Veterans Day Parade on November 11th as well. And that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
All right. Next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. Items of routine and non-controversial nature are placed on the consent agenda to follow the city council to spend its time and energy on the important items and issues. Any councillor may request an item to be pulled from the consent agenda and be considered separately. Items pulled from the consent agenda will be placed on the agenda at the end of the action items section. This, tonight, we have approval of the October 27th, 2025 regular city council meeting minutes. We have approval of the November 6th and 7th, 2025 city council goal-setting work session minutes. We also have a resolution number 25-044, amending provisions of resolution number 23-024, Beautification and Tree Committee, and concurring with the mayor's appointments of Emily Whitfield and Andrea Knight. And I'd just like to take time to thank you for your service to the city. Ladies, would you stand and be recognized? Are you here? Thank you very much. Appreciate your service. And on D is award a contract number 25-010 for the Westside Interceptor upgrades, phase two. All right, that's what we have on the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of passing the consent agenda, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's passed. All right, we're moving on to public hearing. I need a script here. So now at this time and place, set for a public hearing to receive testimony regarding proposed resolution number 25-046, adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026, and from within the Special Grants Fund in the city's adopted budget. First, the staff report will be presented. Following the staff report, I will ask those persons who wish to present testimony, concurring or concerning the proposed supplemental budget, to come to the microphone, state their name and address for the record, and present their testimony. All speakers are requested to be specific in their presentation and to focus their remarks on the relevant issues raised by the proposed supplemental budget for the 2025, 2026 fiscal year. Councillors may ask questions to any speaker at any time. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes for their testimony. I will now open the public meeting, our public hearing on resolution number 25-046. Our finance director, Ms. Britta Meyer, will now present the staff report. Ms. Meyer.
Good evening. This resolution is authorizing a supplemental budget for fiscal year 25, 26, making appropriations and authorizing expenditures from and within the Special Grants Fund of the city of the DOWS adopted budget. Oregon budget law recognizes that after the beginning of the fiscal year, changes in appropriations in the budget sometimes become necessary and so allows for those changes via supplemental budgets and budget amendments. Supplemental budgets add funds to existing budgets while budget amendments move already budgeted funds between categories of the same fund without adding to the fund's total budget. This resolution is necessary to ensure sufficient appropriation authority within the Special Grants Fund related to a Business Oregon Housing Infrastructure Support Grant. The expenditures for $71,998. And this budget will require an increase in appropriation authority to allow for the grant funds to be received and expended. This grant from Oregon Business Housing Infrastructure Support is meant to support the planning and design of a Chenoweth Loop affordable housing development at 816 Chenoweth Loop Road. The project, which will be led by Northwest Housing Alternatives and Columbia Cascade Housing Corporation, will redevelop the site of a former grocery store into a new four-story building with 76 affordable housing units. The grant will fund essential water, storm water, and transportation planning to support the project development. Budget implications, this resolution brings $71,998 in new revenue into the Special Grants Fund. The staff recommendation this evening is to move to adopt resolution number 25-046, authorizing the acceptance of this additional funding for the Business Oregon Housing Infrastructure Support Grant and the appropriations to that fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026. The other alternatives are to direct staff to make changes to the proposed resolution and bring the resolutions back at a future council meeting for consideration or decline to take action. Thank you.
Do you have anything to add?
It's time.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to testify on this matter? If so, please come up and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone? Seeing none, does the council feel it has enough information to make a decision?
I have one question, Chair.
Question?
One question, please. I guess I've lost the drift. Is the grant a pass-through to help the project sponsors do their planning and design in order to contract it out? Or is it for our staff to assist in some way?
It is a pass-through grant.
Very good. So local folks have an ambitious housing project in the books that will hopefully help relieve some of the pressure on people seeking apartments, shelter. And all we have to do is essentially pass your money to help them make that happen. I'm good.
Any objection to moving ahead? Sounds good. Go ahead, Ben. Do you have a question?
Oh, no question.
All right. Hearing no objection, the public testimony portion is now closed. Council discussion, now is the time to bring up issues, questions? None? All right, so council, alternatively, would you, it's on page 60 of 89, is the staff recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we adopt resolution number 25-046, authorizing the acceptance of an additional $71,998 for the Business Oregon Housing Infrastructure Support Grant and appropriation to the Special Grants Fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
And I say yes. So that's passed. Okay. Let's see, we're moving on to, we did public action items. We're on to action item 11. We're, resolution number 25-045, authorizing transfers budgeted amounts between categories of various funds of the city of the DOWS adopted budget, making appropriation and authorizing expenditures for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026. I assume you're going to continue on. Please.
So resolution number 25-045 transfers $386,546 from the contingency line item of the general fund to cover the following items. $138,532 is needed in the Human Resources Department budget and $248,011 is needed in the Information Technology Department budget from the general fund contingency. The budget allocated for both human resources and information technology needs need reassessment due to an increased need in Personnel Services budget and Contractual Services budget. The volume of existing in-progress and backlogged HR and IT work has reached a point where current staff are unable to implement and support current business processes. A new analyst position, which was approved at a prior council meeting, would be split equally between HR and IT and is needed with critical needs, to assist with critical needs spanning both departments. That's about $48,000 to support both IT and human resources. In addition, a contracted IT project manager position will be utilized as temporary support for process improvement and management of ongoing projects. This resolution also funds a safety officer position, which is contracted within the HR department. Additionally, citywide safety training needs have been identified, which were not originally included in the HR budget, and this resolution funds those safety training needs. Are there any questions at this time?
Questions, council?
Just a quick clarification, the IT would be outsourced as a temporary basis, so we don't need to worry about funding an FTE position in IT, right?
Yeah, that's the purpose of asking for the contractual dollars. We are anticipating that those will be spent potentially through the end of this fiscal year. There's potential for us to also come back for some contractual dollars in the next fiscal year budget, but at this time, not looking for an additional FTE. We really want to do some evaluation to find out what our longer-term needs are going to be. So looking for a short-term solution right now.
Other questions? What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to adopt resolution number 25-045, authorizing the transfer of budgeted amounts between categories of various funds of the city of the DOWS budget, making appropriations and authorizing expenditures for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ben Ring, seconds. Do we have any discussion? With hearing no discussion, I'll go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion's carried. Moving on to 11B. Resolution number 25-047, approving a rate increase resulting from increased operational and disposal fee costs incurred by Waste Connections of Oregon Incorporated. And that's DBA, the DOWS Disposal. Mr. Winterbottom, would you be so kind?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Chair, and councillors. I am Jim Winterbottom with the DOWS Disposal. Annually, I come before you with proposed rates based on increases in operational costs and tipping fees. The CPI we use as a benchmark ended in July of 2025. It came in at 3.04%. We've always asked for 85% of that as we try to run as lean as possible and manage our expenses as best we can. I understand that nobody likes rate increases, including myself, but there are times where we just can't help. Prices are going up. Wasco County landfill has already let us know that they are increasing their tip fee by 2.58% January 1st of 2026. If you look at a rate for a customer here in the city of the DOWS for a 32-gallon trash can picked up weekly, they're currently paying $21.78. The increase would have a reflection of 56 cents a month, 13 cents per pickup. If you have one of the larger 90-gallon roll carts that we provide for weekly service, currently paying $32.10 per month, that would be seeing an increase going up to $32.93 for 19 cents per pickup. If you're one of our customers that has a dumpster or a business, a yard and a half container, if you will, currently you're paying $116.54 for service of that container weekly, the increase would be $3.01, taking the monthly charge for the service of that container to $119.55 for 70 cents per pickup. If there are any questions, I would do my best to answer those.
It's curiosity more than a question, but how do we stand compared to other cities our size?
More affordable for what you're getting with the weekly curbside collection at this time. And the reason I say that is ransom numbers. I was in Cascade Locks, where I got to go back to again tonight, and I had some comparisons and DOWS is very affordable.
Other questions, Mr. Winterbottom?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
So, I noticed, I noted that you're using the Western Region CPI as kind of a benchmark to measure increase in costs and things like that, but I'm curious, CPI doesn't typically keep up with inflation and like healthcare costs and retirement and like the benefits that you would pay to an employee. So, I guess I'm asking, my question is, if CPI is the benchmark, then, I mean, it would, at a high level, it would seem to me that you're probably still losing money. So, in the, you know, I don't think that Waste Connections is going to be going out of business anytime soon, but I'm curious, like, the discrepancy between operating costs and things like that, like maintenance for trucks, and again, salaries and benefits, but I don't know, where's the balance there, I guess?
So, we've been talking about that as an industry for a few years now. The Consumer Price Index, the basket they use to price the items every month, there's probably two or three items in that basket of 200 items that pertain to our business. There is a waste and recycling CPI, which I believe right now is almost running double digit, and some of our jurisdictions and other states and other companies are using that model so they can stay whole and keep up with benefits and medical.
Okay. All right.
Chair, if I may make one more comment.
Yes, you may.
I think another thing to just continually note is the partnership that we have with Waste Connections and the Dow's disposal when it comes to the community cleanup, providing liners to the new trashcans that we have in the downtown core, as well as ongoing service, and a few other items that we've noted before that also provide a benefit to the community and to the city directly. Just want to say thank you for it.
Well, each year, I lend my voice of support. When you visit to transfer, it's clean, orderly. The people that you have there are very helpful. That's important. And your contribution to our community, Lions Club, for example, the Christmas tree pickup, all the things that your company does, it's payback for our community, and I just want to let everyone know how valuable and how much we do appreciate your service. Thank you.
Counsel McGolfin?
Yes.
Since this is one of those actions that has the potential of changing a fee for the public, Oregon law requires the city to give the public, anybody who's interested, an opportunity to weigh in before council does that.
All right. Do I need to read the script?
No, just offer the public an opportunity to provide input.
Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak either in favor or opposed to this, what is a rate increase? Yes, sir?
Thank you. Roger Nichols, 1617 Oregon Street. I just want to compliment Jim on his people. We live on a pretty steep part of Oregon Street, just before you go right for the hospital, and it's tough to get it there sometimes in the wintertime. They do not shirk, and everyone is polite, helpful, and smiles. And this is, this comes from the top down, so I have to say something nice about him, so that's where it comes from. Thank you.
And my carriers that pick up my guard reach, I'm on a first name basis, you know, I'll take out water. They're so pleasant and nice, and they make sure every, you just, again, you have good people working, so kudos.
I'll pass that along to him as well.
Please, would you? All right. So, we've given the opportunity for audience, so do we have, what's your pleasure, council?
I think it's my turn, and I will move to adopt Resolution 25047, approving a rate increase resulting from increased operational and disposal fee costs incurred by Waste Connections of Oregon, Inc., DBA the Dow's disposal, effective January 1, 2026.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, request, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? None, hearing none, then the motion passes. All right, moving on.
We ask, council, one other thing real quick, please, Chair. Sure you guys have heard about the penny shortage? We are unable to get pennies when we go to the bank, as part of our change order, so rather than trying to round up or round down every transaction that we deal with at the transfer station, I'd like to work with Mr. Klebes on moving forward with rounding up our menu board at the transfer station for prices. Since we are housed in the City of the DOWS, the transfer station prices are based from here, so if something is $7.11, I'd like to round that down to $7 dime, 7.19, I'd like to round it up to 7.20, so every item on our menu board is either a zero or a five and it's ending numerical number.
Does that require approval by city council?
I don't think so.
And that's something that the mayor or the manager can do?
Yeah, we can explore. Work with the city manager on that. I just wanted, you know, throw that out in front of you guys, let everybody know.
We'd like to hear about it.
Yeah.
Yes, if appropriate.
It might, we'd have to look at the numbers, but it's certainly not something that we're doing tonight.
Good. All right. Okay, we're moving on to C now, General Ordinance Number 25-1422, amending the Dow's Municipal Code Chapter 11.04 Planning Commission. Any report on this? Is there? Oh, yes. Special Director Josh.
Hey, good evening, councilors. Joshua Chandler, Community Development Department. As mentioned, the next item is consideration of adoption, General Ordinance Number 25-1422. This is an ordinance that's amending the Dow's Municipal Code Chapter 11.04. So, back in April of this year, community development staff presented potential adjustments to department operations. Two key changes that we highlighted were reducing the total number of planning commission meetings to, from twice a month to once a month, as well as the consideration and implementation of a hearings officer program. So, these concepts have really, over this last year, kind of evolved into a two-phase approach here. The first phase, which we're discussing this evening, is really just taking a look at 1104 in the Dow's Municipal Code. That is the code that the planning commission operates under. And then Phase 2 will be implemented later on, first part of this next year, and that will be the implementation of a hearings officer, as well as some additional code amendments going into it, but that'll be discussed in greater detail at a later date. So, a full red line comparison has been provided as Exhibit 1. Similar to most amendments that the city attorney opens up and I work with him on, we go through the entire thing to make sure that instead of just adjusting, tweaking little things here and there, we make sure that everything is, you know, complies with current state law, and then it reads appropriately. That is what we did again here. Really, the biggest changes, though, have been highlighted on the bullet points on the second page here, the meeting schedule, adjusting that meeting schedule, as we talked about back in April. We talked about the fact that, looking back to 2013, we started to actually see that the majority of the meetings back since 2013 have actually been canceled, so we really could justify the fact of only really needing one planning commission meeting a month. So, that would be changed to the first meeting of, excuse me, the first Thursday of each month. If there is a holiday, we would be moving that meeting to the following Thursday, to stick consistent with our historic calendar of the first and third Thursdays of each month for planning commission. The implementation of the hearings officer, we would consider having that on the third meeting of the third Thursday, to stay consistent for the public. In addition to meeting schedule, we adjusted attendance and quorum, so there was really a reduction here. What we did here is moved current nonperformances now after, we made the change to after two consecutive absences or three missed meetings in one year, that is considered nonperformance and be considered for removal for this position or for their role as a volunteer. Membership, we also updated effective January 1st. There's new House Bill 3136 that tweaked the membership requirements of a planning commission, so this change is in line with that. Quasi judicial responsibilities and Title 10 relationship, so as we go forward and implement the hearings officer, we had to make the relevant tweaks to the code to reference whose authorities are going to be doing what. Hearing procedures and updates for ethics, there were some additional adjustments to that, and so there was basically some additional housekeeping that went along with it. As mentioned, we will be discussing Phase 2 at the December 18th Planning Commission meeting, is when we're bringing the code amendments forward, following up in the first meeting in January, where we bring it forward to the city council for adoption. In addition to those hearings officer, implementing the hearings officer, you are going to see some additional changes to the Dow's Municipal Code. I won't get into all of those now, as we're going to have a further robust conversation first part of this next year. Next steps, laid out a timeline for you. This timeline is our tentative, you know, set to change, but we feel everything is lined up on our end to proceed with this. This looks like a pretty clear, clear cut next steps for us of calendar events. This really just touches on making sure 2026, the reason I wanted to bring this in front of you during, in the November, at this November meeting, is to make sure that, you know, starting 2026, our planning commission is set from the calendar year going forward with one meeting per month. Budget implications, there are none at this time. The hearings officer review, when those occur in the future, those will be handled on a case by case basis, so effectively, the hearings officer will be called in when we have a quasi judicial application to review, otherwise, the hearings officer will not be working at that time. So, there is money, sufficient funds have been budgeted in the 2526 budget to account for this hearings officer work when it does arise. And so, council alternatives, staff's recommendation is to move to adopt General Ordinance Number 25-1422 as presented. There are some additional alternatives there, and I am more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Yes.
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of questions, and I also want to note that our planning commission chairs in the audience, and I would like to hear from him if he's willing. Generally, my question for, either you, Josh, or Cody would be, or both, how would the hearings officer and that process affect an applicant, especially with regard to time or money? Would it be an equal burden, different, more, less, same? And secondly, just maybe another comment or thought on how you feel this change of process would affect the city or specifically the staff?
Yeah, so overall, the impact to the applicant, the overall goal is very little, almost won't even be noticed. That's the thought, is right now, we have planning commission meetings on the first and the third, and this would be moving it so that a hearings officer is on the third, so there still is going to be one meeting a month, so it's something that the public can kind of think in the back of their heads, second, you know, first and third meeting, that's when either a planning commission meeting or a hearings officer meeting is going to be. So, there will be no additional cost to an applicant. Later on down the road, if the hearings officer, as we, as this is implemented, and we see any increase or uptick in application reviews, we may bring in front of you cost increase, you know, overall fee increases for our application fees, which I, you know, I'm a supporter right now of thinking that we need to increase our application fees, but right now, the hearings officer contractual work is budgeted, so it might be something that's absorbed later on. And kind of going into that second question, that would be, that would be the impact to the city, depending on how many more, depending on how frequent we're having quasi judicial applications or appeals on administrative actions, would depend on the frequency of when we need to bring on our hearings officer.
Thank you. Chair, I don't know if now is the appropriate time or later, but either way, I'd like to see if we could ask our planning commission chair to just give his two cents on this as well.
Would be appropriate now. Oh, I see. Yep, microphone right here, or, perfect, make sure, just tap it to make sure it's on.
I guess my question to you, Chair, or not, is essentially the same. Is this an upgrade in service or in process, in your opinion?
I think it's ultimately, well, it's initially an upgrade in process. I think ultimately it'll be both. The biggest point of the process is, I think it's a little proactive, which is great. In the event that we start getting an increasing amount of quasi judicial hearings or appeals, at some point, the planning commission, whether it be we stay with the old schedule of two times a month or just go down to the once a month, the planning commission has other things to do aside from those two things. I would hate to get us into a situation where our plate is too full, we run into an attendance issue, which we are also changing in this ordinance change, and I, it is proactive for, that's my, that's my take on it. So, we're just kind of getting ahead of some things that we might see coming down the road.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Not for me.
Yeah, I have a question, and I wrote city staff about this over the weekend before the meeting tonight, but, and it's not necessarily specific to just this ordinance, I think, but the, some of the language, in particular, where it says, Commissioner qualifications shall be consistent with ORS 227.0304, as may be amended or superseded. I've been researching that and thinking about it more, and it makes it, in my opinion, it makes it autonomous, it makes it automatic, where, and the example that I have is, if the state, you know, if our legislation in Salem changes ORS 227.0304, and our ordinance says as may be amended or superseded, concerns me that it has the potential to bypass the democratic process here in the City of the DOWS. Not that we couldn't, you know, we're going to review it likely anyways, I would hope, but it is concerning that we would reference a state statute and then basically kind of put it on autopilot, so to speak, so that when it's updated in Salem, it's automatically updated to the city and applicable to the City of the DOWS, without city council, without staff reviewing it, without city council reviewing it, without us giving a chance to the local population in the City of the DOWS, the ability to, you know, give us their opinion, right? Because ultimately, that matters. So, that was one of the concern, that's really the only concern that I have with the ordinance. I think it's good to align with what the current statute is in the state, but that is something that was in the forefront of my mind as I was reading this.
Anything else?
Roger.
Oh, I see, we got hands up on the, let's go with Mayor Mays.
Rich, you're muted.
The second bullet point on the page 76 talks about attendance and quorum, and Cody mentioned the fact that it was implied that we do have some issues sometimes with plant commission members and attendance and what have you, so I'm glad to see that these adjustments have been made. My question is, is, once these thresholds are reached, is it automatically they're off the commission, or is there some kind of notice or warning or whatever?
Can I, can I jump in and answer that?
Sure, of course.
Thank you. Mr. Mays, the removal process is fleshed out in the ordinance. If it looks like you have your packet there, it's on page 80, and I'll give you a second to flip to it. I'm looking at sort of the middle of the page, 11450B, removal. So, it calls for a notice in a public hearing to the, to the commissioner, who's sort of slated for removal at that point, and at that point, it's an option that the mayor has to remove them for misconduct or for nonperformance of their duties, and there's a, there's a public hearing that's, could be held by the city council. The mayor can, the mayor, as the appointing authority by our charter, has the ability to call the public hearing regardless of what this, whether
Regardless of what this, whether this council wants that or not, but in practice, I don't know that I've ever heard of that. And so there's an opportunity for them to come and public hearing and offer testimony, um, to sort of explain themselves if if maybe they. They don't want to be removed in this hypothetical. Um, and so, no, it's not, it's not automatic.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Runyon.
A couple of things. First of all, um, thank you, Counselor Ring, because you read my mind. On a few of those things where the state legislative numbers are involved there. The. The other thing, I know we're not dealing with this part tonight regarding the hearings officer. And I recollect many months ago, you explained to us where and from where. Uh, a hearings officer would be selected, but could you remind for the public listening tonight and myself? Where we, you know, in case there are people out there that wish to be applicants, or if they have the ability to be an applicant. Tell us about where a hearings officer comes from, if not from existing staff.
Yeah, that's a great question. Thank you. Um, so we'll lay it out further, um, in when we have our phase two discussion, but ultimately. It's going to be an internal selection committee. We've yet to decide who will be with on that selection committee, but ultimately the hearings officer would be, um, an eligible land use attorney. Any, any individual, um, practicing land use law in the state. That's effectively, we'd follow local contract review board rules. Um, I think we can do a direct, a direct hire on it, wouldn't have to go through an RFP process. But there will be, we'll, we'll follow it as closely as we can, you know, ensuring that we're complying with state law.
Okay, thank you very much. There are probably some applicants lining up right now.
All right, I think we've exhausted all the discussion. What is your pleasure on this one?
I'd like to recommend that we make an adjustment and and, um. Strike the language when we refer to. ORS two two seven dot zero three zero, uh, section four, it's on page eighty three of eighty nine of our packet. Under the qualifications, um, that's the only amendment or amendment that I would recommend is that we, we drop the as may be. Amended or superseded.
Any argument?
Any big issue with that, I would ask our city attorney?
Yeah, I, I don't recommend that. Counselor Ring sent an email over the weekend that I responded to. I didn't hear back. If you had read the response, Counselor Ring, but, um, I don't think that that. Recommendation, um, is something that I would recommend. I think that that would be the council sort of, um, putting handcuffs on itself. We are subject to state law. At all times, uh, the state has preempted the field of Oregon land use and development. It's a matter of statewide policy. And so nothing that the city does or any city does in the state of Oregon, um. Can ever be inconsistent with state law. And so really, it's just a matter of drafting style. Because regardless of whether I drafted that provision of this ordinance, it would be true. And so, uh, all of this does, I think, is. Reduce the flexibility available to the city and its city council when it comes to these matters, whatever, whatever they are, I mean. As may be amended or superseded appears in this ordinance so many times, it's because it's sort of a default. We're always going to be subject to it. I guess it doesn't really address the concern that I've, I've heard Counselor Ring, uh, describe. And so I actually don't recommend that council does that. Currently, just so you guys know what what it says now. But it's changing in next month, effective January first. So what, what the ordinance, sorry, what the statute says now is. That no more than two members of the planning commission can be, uh, real estate professionals. Or really share the same occupation. And the states recognized that it's getting harder and harder to find. Competent volunteers like Chair Cornet. To fill planning commissions throughout the state and in recognition of that role that they play in our community. Setting long term planning and making recommendations to city councils all across the state for things like, um, you know, policy updates and. The ways that the BLI will be implemented and things of that nature. At any rate, the state has found it harder and harder across the state to have more qualified people sitting on planning commissions, advising city councils. And so they remove the restriction that limits that prohibition. And so put another way, on January first, if the city council wanted to, they could have seven. Real, real estate professionals on the planning commission, or they could have zero. I think the, the real way that local control is guaranteed when it comes to things like this. Is by the people that the city, through the mayor of the city and the city council of the city, through confirmation, appoint to those planning commissions. But regardless, you know, if. If the city council, um, does what I, what I believe Counselor Ring, um, is hoping. We would just be limiting ourselves to this point in time where the statute is what the statute is today. Regardless of the fact that it's always going to be controlling, regardless of what this says. So, uh, put another way, yeah, I, I don't recommend making that change.
Right.
We have Mayor, oh, Mayor, our Counselor Runyon, go ahead.
Thank you, Attorney Kara. That's exactly the right answer. I was agreeing with the question that I, I'm glad Ben brought up, but, uh, there is a reason for having it the way it is. And as a former planning commissioner, a few decades ago, uh, you have exactly the right answer. I just thought the answer needed to be brought out publicly, so I thank you for that.
You're welcome. Anyone else? This is a point of discussion. I'm also in favor of, uh, Counselor Kara's response.
Counselor with an S, with an S, yeah.
Mayor Pro Tem McGloughlin?
Yes, sir.
So a counselor has put something on the table. It's, it's germane to the topic to, uh, ask if there's a second and. A discussion. Well, I think he gave a motion.
Was that a motion?
No, it's a recommendation.
Oh, he was just bringing up a question, but.
Okay.
The way we normally do it is we do a motion and then if it fails to get a second, then we go back and we resubmit. So that's the way it's been done in the past. So do we have a motion?
I want to make sure that it's clear. I was not making a motion that we adopted with that modification of it. I think we needed to get the answer and we got the answer.
So you feel satisfied that you got the answer?
Yes.
All right. So now we come back and do we have? Yes, Counselor Runyon?
No, no.
Okay, so we have, uh, do we hear a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt general ordinance number two five dash one four two two as presented by title only.
By title only, and, uh, we have an option of having the clerk read by title only. Pardon? Oh, yes, we have to get a second to the motion.
I'll second.
All right, we do have a second. Now we have reminder to have clerk read by title only. Or would you like it read in full?
I think the motion was by title only. That's what I was seconding.
You're up.
General ordinance number twenty five dash one four two two, an ordinance amending certain provisions of the Dallas municipal code, chapter eleven point zero four, planning commission.
Now we have a motion on the floor, seconded with a, a reading by the county clerk. All in favor of passage of this by saying aye or raising your hand?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. All right. Where are we at now? That's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Chair Cornet.
Let's go back to. Okay. Now, we move on to item twelve. Uh, discussion item proposed updates to the funding request process. Is there anyone presenting this? Oh, you?
Is it okay?
I hope.
Thanks.
Uh, thank you, Counselor. Uh, this is a discussion item. Uh, I'll be reviewing, uh, some broad brushstrokes about our existing local agency and nonprofit funding request program. And then detailing, um, some proposed changes to that program with some council discussion questions at the end. Looking for your, your input on what staff is indicating, um, how we'd like to move forward with this program. And so we can continue down, uh, the road that we've described in the staff report. Or adjust according to the kind of consensus direction we get this evening. So the current local agency and nonprofit funding request program, uh, is a program that we use to, um. Not solicit, but receive funding requests from, uh, partner agencies. And, uh, integrate them into a formal process, uh, so we can, uh, evaluate them and receive a recommendation for funding. Um, in recent years, we've set a deadline of January thirty first, uh, for agencies to submit an application. Uh, which is reviewed by the city clerk and other staff for completeness, uh, before becoming to the city manager. And, and again, in years past, I've included a recommendation in the overall budget process, uh, that takes place in May. I think as the council knows and has directly experienced, in addition to our budget committee, uh, volunteer members itself. Oftentimes, the conversation about these funding requests, um, dominate one of the nights usually at least, um, during the budget committee process. But this process, you know, does fund, uh, key, uh, initiatives and programs and things that, you know, assist other members in our community. And, uh, add, um, a certain enrichment, um, to, uh, the city of the Dells. Some of the challenges we've had in addition to the amount of time it takes at the budget committee. Meeting and some of the confusion around, you know, is this a grant review committee? You know, are we, um, talking about these individual funding requests in a meeting where we're really trying to set overall, um, budget appropriations and discuss budget policy? Is that, um, some of the applications we received don't comply with the criteria we currently have. Where we receive requests for kind of a little bit of everything under the sun, uh, but also requests that, uh, include, uh, general operating expenses. Such as, uh, rent, um, power bills, um, minor and, and major repairs. Rather than, um, programmatic services that align with the criteria that we've laid out. One of the additional, uh, difficulties is that the overall program doesn't have a funding allocation. Which can be a little bit difficult for staff and difficult for the applicants to, you know, have a sense of. How much funding may be available, what can be applied for, can they apply every year on an ongoing basis? You know, should they restrict their requests to five thousand or ten thousand or a hundred thousand dollars? Which again, makes the overall process, uh, rather more difficult. And so we've outlined on page, uh, eighty eight of your packet, um, some proposed changes. And we think really bifurcate or separate the whole budget process, um, from the, uh, uh, program, application, submission and review process. And so what we're proposing to do is that the city manager, uh, as part of the overall, uh, city budget recommendation. Will include, uh, a funding level, uh, for the overall program into distinct categories. This builds upon some changes that we made in the last budget cycle to create a tourism fund. Where, uh, uh, all of the transient lodging taxes dollars, uh, are received. Um, and the specific uses under the, the definition, the state definitions for tourism, um, are allocated. And so the budget that would be submitted, uh, to the budget committee would have a general fund, uh, funding recommendation and a tourism fund funding recommendation. That recommendation will be based on any remaining funds once the city core services, contingencies, reserves and other city funding needs are met. So this is kind of the, one of the last things that we'll do after the core mission and services of the city, um, are evaluated and supported. The budget committee and then the city council will review, recommend or adopt changes and pass the overall budget with these funding, uh, allocations. This establishes a defined annual allocation first and which will be followed by a clear standardized process. Which will improve predictability, transparency and efficiency, efficiency overall. So when the new budget takes place or takes effect, January or July first, uh, twenty twenty six, for example. Applications, uh, the application due date will be changed from January thirty first to August first. And so that will give local agencies and nonprofits, um, about a month to submit their applications. They effectively will have much longer than that because they will have a general sense of what the budget committee's recommendation is. In May before, uh, the council actually adopts it, uh, in June. Staff will review submitted applications again for kind of completeness, uh, to make sure that it's eligible uses. Whether the deadline was met, that the project or program is within city limits and it's an eligible use of funds. And then we'll separate them out into specific tourism uses that meet again, that state guideline for, for tourism to be considered for the tourism funding allocation. And the remaining applications will be, uh, considered for funding from the general fund allocation. We will then take those applications and forward it, uh, to the city council along with a scoring rubric. And each city councillor will score the applications and submit the scores to the city clerk. These criteria, uh, the scoring criteria that, uh, is to be finalized, uh, will include. Items such as alignment with the city's vision, uh, and mission, community impact and benefit. Feasibility and sustainability, uh, the financial need, are you leveraging matching funds? Are there grants that you can bring to the table? And there'll be additional criteria for the tourism specific uses, um, such as funding requested per visitor. The reach of some of the promotional, uh, efforts that the, the organization will conduct with the funding. And the estimated overnight stays, uh, generated and really have that kind of higher bar evaluation for those tourism specific uses. The councillors will submit their scores to the city clerk who will compile them or aggregate them together and forward them to the city manager. Um, and I'll, uh, compile them down, uh, and bring it back to the city council as an action item with a staff report similar to the one you see this evening. For a final funding recommendation, uh, likely in November. So that's kind of the general outline of what the process would look like. One of the other benefits to, um, having a process such as this is oftentimes I'll have questions about. When a certain organization should show up to present or answer questions during the budget committee process. Which is a very difficult, uh, question to answer because sometimes they can come up in the first day or the second day or the third day of our budget committees. This new process with a recommendation at a dedicated city council meeting like this means that we can have all the applicants here. All together with a focused conversation and being able to answer any questions that, um, the city council may have. I wouldn't recommend individual funding presentations, uh, because I think that could lead to a very long meeting. But being available to answer specific questions could be helpful in making that final determination. If we proceed down this road, uh, looking to the, uh, twenty six, twenty seven budget. Some of the longstanding, uh, funding support that we've, uh, provided to some organizations would be moved from the city council's budget. To, um, the appropriate, um, uh, another appropriate place in the overall city's budget. A couple of examples that come to mind is the city's ongoing support for the Spain Neuter Program. In partnership with Columbia Gorge Humane Society. That's, uh, approximately fifty thousand dollars a year and is detailed in the city council budget. We will move that to the animal control budget, uh, as part of the police department's budget, which is a logical nexus point for that and something that. Aligns with some of the city core services around animal control, um, and, and brings that benefit, uh, to the community. The Dallas Main Street and will, uh, could potentially move to the economic development budget. And again, would be part of the overall recommendation that I would bring to the budget committee. And some of the other funding uses that are, are longstanding, such as the Fort Dells fourth event and the fireworks are already allocated in the tourism budget. And so, um, they would most likely remain there, um, along with sister cities. So some of the budget implications, uh, you know, really depends on the, uh, funding, um, allocation. Made, uh, through the city's budget process and ultimately the number of, uh, applications we receive and the awards that we give out. Staff is, uh, is emphasizing, um, the importance of making sure that the allocation amount for each type of funding. Does not take away from the city's core service needs. We're not an overall granting agency with endless money to award to partner organizations. We have core services. We need to make sure that we have our, uh, core service departments, um, fully resourced. And able to carry out those critical services of a city. Um, again, funding for approved projects will come from either the general fund or the tourism fund as appropriate. And if there's unspent allocation, which, uh, has happened in years past where a certain amount of funding was not used in a given fiscal year. Or, uh, uh, nonprofit or other organization simply never followed up. That unspent funding would go back to its respective fund. And so a couple of discussion questions that I've detailed on page eighty nine, just to kind of prime the conversation. You're certainly not restricted to these is first and foremost, what is the council's overall feedback on these proposed, proposed changes? Are we headed down in the right direction? That would be helpful to hear that from the council this evening as we move forward. And are already starting to think about the budget process. and are already starting to think about the budget process for next year. Some of the criteria I've listed, does that kind of hit the mark or are we missing anything? Should there be a limit on the frequency that organizations can apply? Can they apply every year in perpetuity? If they've received funding for a certain number of years, do they need to take a break? You know, some of those different dynamics. And should there be a set maximum grant award or a limit on the number of awards for a particular entity? Again, we've not really placed any, any limits on that. So again, if we allocated $100,000 to the general fund element of this program, we could do 10, $10,000 grants or five $20,000 grants or somewhere in between. That would provide a bit more direction to staff and a little bit more transparency and predictability for organizations interested in applying as to what they can actually apply for. And so with that, I'll pause and answer any questions that you have, but really looking forward to your input. Thank you.
So the monies derived for this fund comes from transitory or room tax? Or does it come from the general budget?
So it, it's a, it's a, it's a mixed answer, honestly. So the transient lodging taxes that are generated within the city limits are received entirely in the tourism fund that we established for this year. A little less than half of those funds are then transferred into the general fund. But once they're in the general fund, we refer to them as general fund dollars, not transient lodging tax dollars. Kind of as additional information, you know, there are state efforts to change this transient lodging tax split and allow cities more flexibility to use transient lodging tax dollars for general fund purposes, rather than some very strict parameters around tourism. And so that could change in the future, just to be very clear and transparent. But that's why we've kind of made this recommendation to have two allocations, one in the tourism fund, one in the general fund, and kind of bifurcate these or separate these into those two pots.
So the reoccurring funding that, for example, Humane Society, where does you think fit into that?
So you think is one of those programs that could apply to this program that we're talking about.
Right.
If there is, you know, additional input, such as with the Spain Neuter Program, that's something that could be considered in a particular department, but would be part of the city manager's recommendation to the budget committee. And so there is a little bit of a decision that needs to be made there and a recommendation that I would bring. And I think that's why it's important to kind of have a two-step here. If the you think, for example, is not included and the city manager's recommended budget to the budget committee, and the budget committee doesn't make those changes, they'll have their answer as to the city's overall budget for that year, and they can then apply for the program and vice versa. The Spain Neuter Program is something that the city has elected to do in partnership with the Columbia Gorge Humane Society, and would secure that funding through the normal budget process and would not have to apply, if that makes sense.
And I agree with that. It's been, because I'm the longest-serving councillor and I was here when, before these decisions were made, it was made usually at city council meeting and it put us at a disadvantage. And when there was a change of manager, that operation or that procedure was removed from councillor, moved into the city manager's office. And then when you took over, that has now transitioned back into a process, again, back within, you know, certain parameters. At one time, there weren't the type of criteria that's applied to it now. And I, I approve and appreciate that because you need to have steps that are easily understood and that we also need to know, disclose the amount of monies we're dealing with. And we also need to place on top of that limitations and expectations on the money. So all of those things are being defined in this proposal. And I see, it looks like it's being streamlined. And the direction that you're moving, I agree with. I just, the, some of the issues that you addressed with the mandatory, like Humane Society, like some of the other things, we need to have those, a long-term funding source so that we don't go through the problems with the Humane Society that we've had with different changes of personnel operations closing down. We want to provide sustainability to some of those operations. Do you get my drift?
Yes, I believe so. And that's where we've had some conversations around dog licensing and that being a source of recurring revenue for the Humane Society. I think what's important here overall is the process. And so I've, I've, having worked in this community for, for approximately 12 years or so, I've seen many instances where individual funding requests may come to the city manager or may come to, for council in the middle of a budget year. And there's a request being made for consideration without knowing all the different applications and all the different potential opportunities there may be for partnership. And we've also had funding requests, you know, frankly, made at the 11th hour at a budget committee meeting. And it's, it's very hard to, to, to vet, to engage with those kind of last minute requests. And again, consider them amongst all the different opportunities. Financial resources are limited. We can't fund everything. And being able to be strategic and make an informed decision is where this, this, this process and processes like this really, really shine.
The last point was when you don't have a handle on some of the income and it's not known when you go through the process. I, I like the process that you pointed out because it gives some detail. It also has, it's transient, it has, it's very understandable for people. And it gives parameters to work under, plus timelines. So I, I like all of that pointed out into a policy like this. So I think you're going down the right path. Whether or not, tonight is a discussion, I don't see the specifics, but when we get to the point of looking at some of the details, right? Does that make sense? I'm, I'm in favor of moving down this path. Oh, I didn't see your hand. Mr. Councillor. Runyon, please.
Really? My turn?
Yeah. Well.
You're such a great.
By the way, Mayor Mays, Mayor Mays, it's really tough because you're dark and I can't see your hand go up. So we gotta get some, there you go. Now I can. All right.
He's got it.
Councillor Runyon, would you take it?
Yep. The mayor actually has a cartoon hand on his screen. I don't know how to do the cartoon hand. Well, Tim, that was a great speech. I don't disagree with a lot of it. It just wasn't giving the rest of the council an opportunity to talk. I just have one question, City Manager Klebs, and that's page 88, number two. I guess I missed the, the explanation, but it says, changing it from January to August, using a current example of the current year, does that mean you're going back to August 25th? Or forward to August 26th, which would be after the beginning of the fiscal year? So I'm lost. I'm lost.
My apologies there, councillor. The proposal here would be to change the deadline for applications moving forward from January 31st, 2026 to August 1st, 2026. And that way, we will know what the funding allocation is that was acceptable to the council and the budget committee based on my recommendation and the overall city budget.
But the budget committee meets in May?
Correct. Correct. So the budget committee would meet in May, and we would approve the, the overall amount of money to be considered for this program. And then that would take effect July 1st, 2026. And then applications would be due August 1st, 2026. You know, with, with the amount of funding allocated to the program, fully reviewed and approved and adopted. And so that will give applicants a firm understanding of how much funding may be available or not. And they can customize and adjust their applications as they see fit.
Okay. So basically, we're eliminating those groups from coming and speaking at the budget process in May.
That's, that's part of the goal, frankly, so we can focus on the overall city's budget process. If we do get requests that evening or those evenings, the, the city council and the budget committee, you know, have, have discretion. But by structuring it this way, it also gives the option of your specific funding request was not included in this overall city, proposed city budget, but you can apply for the program and the application is due August 1st.
Okay. Thank you.
I had written down that as a question as well, but now it makes sense.
The mayor still has his hand up.
Oh, well then, well, let's recognize the mayor. Did I see that? Did he do that? That's, you know, that's recorded.
So, um, so the budget committee meets in May and June. And then we receive the applications from all these groups, which is due August 1st. And by that time, you as a staff separates the requests into those that are related to tourism and those are related to the general fund, and set an amount of money that is available for funding. Is that, do I have that right so far?
The amount of money will be set as part of the budget process, just confirming. Okay.
Okay. I guess the concern I have is when that amount is set, and according to your staff report, number one, about halfway down on page 88, the recommendation will be based on any remaining funds once city core services, contingencies, reserves, and other funding needs are met. It seems to me that in some years, that could be $100,000 and other years it could be $1 million. Am I at all, you understand what I'm, what I'm suggesting?
I believe so. I think I can confidently say I don't, I don't think it'll be $1 million. The, the city overall capital improvement needs, our contingency and other reserves, I think will, it'll be more prudent to make sure that those are fully funded than allocating such a large amount to the program. But you're absolutely correct. It could vary from year to year. And that's why I think it's important to make sure and emphasize that those city core services are met first. And so in, in a year where things, things might be tight and we need to make sure that we're supporting our police department and the IT department and the other core services of the, of the city, you're right, there maybe, there, there could be only $25,000 available in a given year. In other years where we've been able to meet those needs, there could be $100,000 or, or, or more. And I think that really emphasizes the importance of kind of making this that two-step process, where we are evaluating the overall needs of the city and all its various general fund departments as part of that budget process, and then considering this, this allocation afterwards.
Well, to get away from, I think I mentioned this to you a while back, is that in order to get around or get away from those, what could be wild changes in the amount of money available, is to establish a base and maybe use the CPI to increase that base every year. Just something for, to throw out there, I'm not saying I, I'm for it. I'm just saying maybe it's something to consider as a way to keep it under control and keep it, you know, tied to a certain, to a certain barometer, such as the Consumer Price Index.
And, and Mr. Mayor, I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with that concept. And I think I know where you're getting at with that kind of consistency. And I think I'm on the same page with you there. I think what I'm trying to emphasize here then, when it comes to cutting this program or cutting one of the general fund departments, we're going to cut this program first.
Right. And I totally support that. Okay. My last question's on item four, where it talks about eligible applications are forwarded to the city council along with the scoring rubric. I, I trust that you haven't really developed this scoring system yet, because I'd like to get more information on how exactly you would expect the city council to score these.
Well, so I'm going to be very frank and acknowledge our city clerk, Amy L., who in a former life was also a teacher and has a very robust rubric draft. That's something that we can, will refine down if council provides consensus direction that this is the general road you'd like us to continue moving down. And that's something we can, we can share as we finalize the program. And it's something we'd like to share with applicants as well. So we have that transparency and they know how they'll be evaluated.
Okay. I just want to clarify that this isn't the budget committee that makes this final decision after August. It's the city council only. Is that correct?
The city council would make the final decision on the awards given. The budget committee would set the program allocations, but that, that then is also adopted by the city council.
Right. Thank you.
I see it as an effort to improve the procedure and also streamline, and also address some of the concerns that people in the community have had about inconsistency, I guess, or questions at the process. And, and I've heard those criticisms after this, you know, process. So I think you're addressing those things and I, I, I agree that I'm in favor of moving ahead.
I would draw the council's attention to the four discussion questions at the end of the staff report. I think I've heard feedback on, on the first one and a little bit on the second one, but not so much on the third and fourth one. Any comments there?
I would suggest a limit on frequency of two consecutive years.
See, I, I keep going back to you think and that's, oh, oh, Mayor Mays.
I, I, on number three, I would, it's, with all due respect to Council Randall, that kind of strikes me as being a little overly restrictive, especially with, I mean, there's organizations that have come to us every year and are funded every year and all of a sudden, we're going to cut them off? I mean, that, I'd be a little concerned about that one. The amount of money I'm more flexible about.
I keep coming back to you think because that's funds, substance and alcohol and for the youth of our community. And that's, in my opinion, very vital and part of our mission is to give back towards kids' youth. So I would have a concern about that one on number three as well, if it were just one year, two year, or three year.
How many applications does staff get for these requests every year? Because when we get, I've been on the budget committee for several years and we only get sort of the, the ones that like float to the top, so to speak, right? So.
Yeah. So in the budget committee, the proposed budget last year, what was included for funding were the recommendations that I made. We also included a list of all the funding requests received. And just kind of, maybe amusing anecdotal process or comment is that as we've made the process more clear and definite, it's, it's brought in more applications, frankly. Because people understand how to go about this, which is, you know, it's, again, as a, as an entity that is not a granting agency, first and foremost, it's, it's just interesting to see this increase in requests. In terms of total funding requests that we've had, it has been increasing, as I said. Let me see if I can get a number for you.
Okay. I'm just curious, like, how much, like, time is this gonna save and whatnot? I absolutely think that there needs to be some sort of evaluation process, right? But I also recall that by the time we get to the budget committee, that we kind of, we know how much money or how much leeway we have to spend on, on these sorts of programs and whatnot. I think we've, I don't know. I think we've done a pretty good job of allocating it, but.
I, I would say at the end of the day, I don't disagree that there's been an issue with the allocation, the ultimate allocation of, of funds. But the process occurring during a budget committee meeting and the amount of time X amount of dollars consume Y amount of the conversation, when we have millions of dollars in general fund and public works and we have those core city service needs, that's the ideal focus for the budget committee meetings. And I think I would also highlight that some applicants show up, some applicants don't. Some applicants show up the first night, but not the third night where it's more intensely discussed. It's, it's, I don't think we've, we've landed in a wrong place ultimately, but I just think the process could still be improved and I, and I think that's where we're landing here.
Well, speaking for myself, I, and having sat through now, I think, six budget cycles or perhaps seven, I'm fully in support of this idea. I think the idea of setting a, a grant budget, if you will, is very sound and wise and long overdue. So I fully support that. And I don't have at this moment. And um, I don't have at this moment uh, much to say about point three. I'll chew on that, but with regard to discussion question one, uh, yes, hundred percent agree for me. Two, yes, I agree. I think the criteria are broadly right on. I'd like to see it refined and and for us to um, to go down this path.
Scott? Any comments?
Well, I have a question about um, we're dialing it back to um, August to have the uh, requests submitted. We consider them and and give our recommendations in November. Does that mean they have to wait till the following year? Or is that awarded immediately?
No, so so again, even though we make, historically, we've made awards or recommendations in in May or or June. The budget funds aren't available until July. Um, so the the applications would be due in in August. And I I think the process or timeline we're outlining here is giving us some time to do that review for completeness, to get it out to council, to go through the process of, you know, the scoring rub, but get it back to to me, put it in a staff report and recommendation in time for the packet to go out. That's why we were identifying November. And once those were awarded, we would move forward with the regular process that we've instituted now, which is to secure funding agreements with each of those organizations and then make those funds available in that fiscal year.
Ken? Any comments?
No, I I'm not opposed to making sure that we have some sort of evaluation criteria. I think that's necessary whenever we're going to spend public money, but just curious on the timing and things like that and um, making sure that we cap it, the total cost appropriately. And I think that'll, that should help, but I guess maybe one, one more quick question. You mentioned things like the the spay and neuter program with the humane society and whatnot is something that we already budget. Or that we are, that we typically like.
For two years now.
Yeah. Um, so we're creating that like precedent for something like that, but is there, what other? Are there other things? I mean, there's, there's always like the Fortale, Fortale's fourth that comes up and like a number of other things that we've also funded for some number of years. So those, those organizations would need to come to the table with an application every year rather than just sort of a continuance of.
Yeah, I mean, there's, 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 there's two, you know, processes here again, right? So the city manager brings a proposed budget to the budget committee for consideration, working with staff and department heads. And within that budget, there are all kinds of recommending fund, funding allocations. And I think the intent here is that some of those partnerships we have with outside entities that provide services that align with that. The core services of the city, such as the spay and neuter program and animal control, seem to have a good fit. We've had some conversation around, for example, the link funding requests that we get every year and their funding requests going towards um, public transportation. And again, that being something that many cities kind of have as a core function or support in one way or another. That would be through continued conversations with myself and and part of that recommendation at the budget committee. Other uses, um, such as um, uh, promotional monies for a concert down in the Lewis and Clark Park would apply through this program and be considered out of the terrorism fund. Other pro, other uses, um, not to single anybody out, but um, for um, a program at the senior center, for example, or with uh, Radio Tietta or um, some other entity like that um, could apply for the general fund allocation most likely. So there's still a certain amount of discretion as as there is overall with the city manager's uh, proposed budget that they bring to the budget committee.
One additional comment, though, that the Chamber of Commerce, that they're funding their tran- transitional room tax, um, they do have an uh, grant process that uh, those entities for those things can apply for. So that's another uh, source of revenue that comes from the city to the the chamber. And then they disperse it out. So that's just one more thing that we need to be aware of. So there's other opportunities.
Are you speaking about other grant opportunities for the people in the public?
Uh huh, just like you were explaining.
Sure.
Oh, the mayor again, he's, oh, Mayor Mays, would you please share your thoughts?
Yeah, the more I think about it, I'm I'm, you know, one of the reasons that we're doing well financially is because of the Google revenues. But everybody, and we've mentioned this before, has to be cognizant of the fact that these Google revenues are going to be very unpredictable as we go into the future. There'll be, there'll be, there'll be money there, but the amounts are going to fluctuate and for for reasons too lengthy to get into here, but it just leads me to believe that maybe a cap would be prudent. Uh, I'm very flexible on that and I'd like to hear some other thoughts on it, maybe not tonight, but when this comes back before the council. So that's, I just like to have some consideration to have some. And when I'm talking about cap, I'm talking about the amount, the total amount available, not not uh, individual groups, so.
Well, I would say, if you don't mind, Jer.
Go ahead, please.
In in response and just perhaps driving towards an end to this evening's discussion, that would be exactly what we would discuss at the budget committee process, the big picture, the appropriate uh, sum for the year, the amount that would be in a position to fund. And then leaving the sort of the fine grain chopping up of, you know, nickels and dimes for a city council meeting in the fall.
And then I I would also add, this is a great uh, place maybe to give an example of those those larger policy considerations when we talk about the budget. And so um, just to highlight uh, for the community again, that the city council took very uh, direct action in passing a resolution and budgetary guidance uh, for the use of Google revenues coming in from the new data centers. A portion of which, and again, there's, I'm, I'm, I promise staff, I won't go too far down this rabbit hole. But again, there's, there's, there's four kind of buckets to the new revenues coming in. There's um, property taxes, which go into the general fund. There's the community service fee, which under that resolution, we will use to uh, help augment the capital improvement needs for the city, specifically our facilities, such as a roof at city hall, a roof at the police department, et cetera, et cetera. And then there's the gap payment, which we've specifically reserved to augment our public works master plan and was specifically tied to mitigating or reducing some of the rate increases the council authorized for water and sewer rates. Water and sewer rates did go up and they will continue to go up, but not as much as they would have otherwise if not for these Google revenues. And so for this program, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I don't anticipate looking to the bulk of those revenues to fund this program. Again, we'd be looking and and keeping in mind the transient lodging tax revenues we receive and how that's split between the terrorism fund and the general fund.
Well, my comments were directed, now that you mentioned it, toward the property tax revenue, which is going to come into directly into the general fund and which, in my opinion, uh, is subject to uh, fluctuation. So I'll just leave it at that.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Well, to conclude, I think um, this procedure should be fair and impartial, which I believe it is, transparent, and I see that, with clear expectations, timelines and amount available for each allocation. And I think it addresses all those things. The only thing that, like Counselor um, Randall said, um, or someone said that should there be a limit on the frequency that organizations can apply every year, every three? That one I have, I'd like to be, I'd like to have more information and and on that. But that's the only one out of the four that I'm concerned with. Is there anything else that could be added to this discussion? It's been a good discussion, by the way. And I, I should give you some clear uh, direction.
No, what I'm hearing, uh, yes, what I'm hearing from councils, we're headed down uh, the right path.
Yes.
Um, we want to maintain uh, flexibility and openness there uh, to the applicants and how often they can apply and how much. And also agreement that the approach here is again, through the budget process and ensuring that the city's core services are are met first, um, and this program second. But that there's a general support overall for, you know, providing uh, these kind of resources to key community partners and services.
I think this concludes unless anyone has anything else to say.